Call to order, the City Council Work Session Meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 9th, 2017 is now five o'clock. The executive assistant, please go roll.
Mayor Steve Dander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vatter.
Here.
Mike Parshin.
Here.
Tim Rayapelle.
Here.
Henry Tweed.
President.
Does turn quorum. Number one, discussion on US 2 and US Business 2 study. Earl here?
Not here today, uh, here today. Um, with, we have Matt from SRF and Darren Leish from MINDOT who have, who are taking over the presentation.
Okay.
I'll just kick it off. I'm Darren Leish, I'm, uh, planning. I'm the planning director with MINDOT in District 2, the Northwest Region. I, uh, I came by here, I think, last July, um, kind of brought up this issue with, with Business 2, um, something that's been an ongoing issue for the last 20, 30 years, um, and it, um, cropped up again on our district-wide safety plan. And we kind of talked about some of the needs. We've had a series of serious injury crashes over the last 20 years, a fatality, um, and, um, and a high crash rate at that intersection, about three times the average. Um, and so we want to address this with our, our next project coming up. We have an overlay planned on Highway 2, um, that's coming up in, in 2021, um, and we need to get out in front of this so that we have time to do the environmental, to do the right-of-way, um, and make sure that, you know, we're getting the, the right improvement for this intersection. Um, at that first meeting, uh, we did, uh, present an, an alternative, um, of closing the, the median. Um, you know, we heard from, from this group, um, that first we needed to look at more of a comprehensive look. We needed to look upstream and downstream on Highway 2. Um, we also needed to get the businesses involved and get their input, get their buy-in on improvements and, and look at other alternatives that could improve safety but not disrupt the businesses and connectivity of the area. Um, and so I'm going to turn it over to Matt. He's gonna, kind of go over the, the study that we went through. Can I just point out that the MPO partnered with MINDOT then to, uh, to get a study going for us and, uh, and Matt led up that study with SRF. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt and you can present on the study.
Uh, thanks Darren. Uh, my name's Matt Pacina with SRF Consulting. Uh, been with SRF for about 13 years as a traffic engineer there. Um, we were commissioned by the MPO, working with the, the MPO on this study, uh, to kind of reevaluate things and had a lot of just good discussions. So I'm just going to quick recap, kind of overview of the study, some of the alternatives that were looked at and kind of where we're sitting at after the meeting, uh, this afternoon. And then, uh, Darren, I'll turn it back over to Darren to talk about next steps. So, uh, let's see if it, a little bit of a delay on it. So, um, overall study goals, really kind of, you know, quantify what, what the deficiencies are in the area, um, you know, at the various study intersections, identify and evaluate various alternatives to address those issues with the focus on trying to be able to develop an improvement that can be incorporated into that resurfacing project coming up in 2021. Um, part of the study was also to gain some consensus amongst the stakeholders through a steering committee, as well as various public outreach efforts. And then, all the while, uh, trying to make sure that we're environmentally compliant. Um, the study goes through a compliant process so that it can move into design and development moving forward. So, real briefly, study overview, uh, the area for the study covered US 2 from Highway 220 on the south and east side of the study area up to County Road 73, uh, and then we also included a segment of, of Business 2, uh, to the intersection of, of County Road 17. So those are, that was kind of the primary study area and the study intersections that we looked at. So we went through a pretty exhaustive existing conditions analysis, um, you know, looking at crash history, safety being probably the biggest in, uh, factor that was out here and probably the need for the study. Um, so we looked at crash history. Uh, we focused originally on, on a five-year window, but then we actually expanded that out to 10 years and beyond, uh, to really kind of hone in on what have, what have been the trends, particularly at the US 2 and Business 2 intersection. Uh, we also looked at roadway and intersection capacity. Um, you know, from a traffic volume perspective, you know, the MPO collected a lot of the data during harvest season, so we're really focusing on kind of that, that peak condition out here and making sure if it can work for the peak harvest condition, we can work for all the other times of the year is kind of the, the thought process behind that. Uh, we looked at the, the geometric configurations that are out there, access, various environmental conditions, land use, you know, as far as what's out there today and what could be out there in the future. Um, so we wanted to be mindful of that. Uh, we did high-level look at, um, some river crossing impacts and what a new south river crossing or, or multiple river crossings could mean to the corridor. Uh, we did look at that from a high level. Um, and then one of, one of the big things has been heavy commercial compatibility. So, um, working with the steering committee and the businesses in the area, you know, we've heard loud and clear that, uh, trucking access and business impacts are, are very important and, and critical and to finding a solution to address the issues, um, that, that is compatible with those businesses is very important. So, a- as we go through our existing conditions analysis, really there was one kind of key area that kept coming to the top. Um, it was the US 2 and Business 2 intersection. Um, the other intersections, um, you know, there weren't any necessarily statistically significant amount of crashes relative to other similar locations, but the, the US 2 and Business 2 intersection, that was one that in particular, you know, as Darren mentioned, you know, it has basically a four, four times more crashes than what would be expected for intersections with similar characteristics. So, we start to dive into what are a lot of the issues that are out there and looking at a lot of the detail of the crash data and the traffic movements, you know, what types of crashes are occurring, um, and some of the other factors as far as, um, for those of you that have driven it, you know, in the median, that there's a depressed median, it's kind of a roller coaster, particularly for a lot of the trucks, um, traveling through there, are some of the key issues. Um, and so I won't, I won't go into, into too much detail. I know it's a lot of information, but if you do want to ask questions about it, we can certainly get into it. But, you know, over the last 10 years, there's been about a little over 25 crashes, 26 crashes to be exact, um, on the order of magnitude, there's been some years where there hasn't been any crashes to, uh, up to about six in 2015. So, um, it's kind of been, uh, not necessarily any trending one way or the other, but there's just been a pretty steady, um, amount of crashes within the area. The big, the big type of movements that we're seeing from a crash perspective, runoff roads are, are, are a, a player there. Uh, the westbound left turn, so when you're on US 2, uh, kind of heading actually into the north, we call it westbound, but as they turn left across the, the eastbound US 2 directions onto Business 2, that's a higher, higher, uh, left turn type crash, uh, that's occurring. Um, and then there's just some failure to yields that are, that are up there too, kind of, kind of, um, basically drivers that aren't obeying the laws, you know. So, from a crash perspective, you know, that's kind of the high level and that's why we wanted to focus a lot of our improvements on this location. As I did mention, um, there was a project steering committee meeting that had, um, members or representation from the MPO, FHWA, MINDOT, Polk County, uh, East Grand Forks, various business owners, several which are here today. Um, we've had five meetings throughout the project. We started back in January through today. We had, today we had our final meeting, can I go through? Um, and it's been very good discussions, I would say. Everyone's been very, uh, open and honest and I think that having that good feedback has, has really provided a lot of value. Um, and as we kind of get into this a little bit, you know, from where we started at, you know, with one of the improvements that was previously recommended as part of one of the safety plans, and I'll, I'll show you that to you, to where we're at is, is, is pretty different. So, um, we did host two, uh, two public involvement meetings, uh, one in February, one in April. Uh, the first one was really kind of to hone in on what those issues are out there here, get, get feedback. Um, and then back in April, we came back with, with the various alternatives, um, at that point to kind of, once again, get feedback on the different options that, that were, were out there. From an alternatives perspective, like we said, we, we really was focusing on the US 2 and Business 2 intersection itself. Um, as I mentioned, we did study kind of the other study area intersections as far as that 10th Street or County Road 73 to the north, um, County Road 17, as well as Highway 220 to the south. So those were all included as part of the study, um, but since we didn't identify any critical issues at those locations, we, um, more or less defaulted back to what was done previously. And so there were two safety plans that were done, uh, over the last few years. Uh, Polk County did their countywide safety plan, um, and it identified a, a number of improvements, um, at 10th Street or County Road 73, um, and at 17, um, most of those were primarily just signing and lighting type of improvements, um, kind of low-cost, um, type of improvements there. Um, the County Road Safety Plan for Polk County that was developed, actually identified Highway 220 to the south, um, as a, as a safety improvement would be an R cut, which is a reduced conflict U-turn intersection. Um, it's a type of improvement that has been known to provide safety benefits, um, but when we were actually, as part of this study, going into more detail, we identified that, um, approximately 10 of the crashes that were identified at that intersection is occurring, actually were occurring at the 220 north intersection, and so they were miscoded. And so when those safety plans are done, it's more of a high-level look at things, um, and they're not really diving into the detail of each individual location. So, um, so that R cut, uh, that was developed for that location, actually we feel might not be the most, uh, may not be needed at this time. And so that was just one thing that we wanted to bring up. Um, and then, um, focusing on the US 2 and Business 2 intersection, MINDOT's, uh, safety plan that was done a few years ago and updated specifically looked at the US 2, Business 2, and had identified closing the median. And once again, that's a high, a higher level type of study, um, but that was the type of improvement and safety improvement that was identified at that time. So that's kind of sets the stage. That's where, you know, the baseline, that was kind of the, the starting point for some of the improvements that we started to look at was a basic closing of the median. So now I'm going to run through the, the various alternatives briefly. Um, I'm not going to spend too much time on, on each of these, um, but if you do have questions, I'll, I'll try to hit the highlights on them. But so essentially, this is, um, alternative one is a no-build, so I'm hopping right to alternative two. And so what alternative two is, would essentially be some turn lane, you know, a turn lane improvement. So it would create a, oh, an offset left turn, so it would create a little bit of more separation from the, the through movements, which, uh, would, would provide some benefit. Uh, it constructs an eastbound, uh, acceleration lane, so vehicles that are on Business 2 heading to the east on US 2 would actually have their own dedicated lane to be able to accelerate up to speed and merge at speeds similar to like a freeway interchange situation. Uh, we looked at the stable days access and the proximity and, and how that influences vehicles getting into the turn lane. Um, and so closing that stable days access was identified. Um, but one of the other big things is, I mentioned a little bit, that roller coaster effect. As, as you go through the median and kind of dip down and back up and, and a lot of the trucks, you know, that tips their, their load, particularly during harvest season, you get a lot of debris on the road. Um, that creates some safety issues. Um, and so this alternative would actually help smooth that out. So this, this graphic in the, in the, the bottom left here, um, kind of illustrates what's out there today, um, not exactly to scale, but it's pretty close. Then, the, the, what's right underneath that, it would be kind of just an illustration of, of leveling that out. So that would provide a benefit. This alternative provides about a 27% crash reduction, which when you start to look at that over a 20-year kind of life cycle, um, that equates to about a $1.1 million of savings in crash costs. So, you know, obviously each crash has a cost tied to that amount, so by reducing crashes, you're going to save that much in crash costs. So that's where that is. The construction cost of this was about 1.1 million, so on par with what the savings would be. Uh, alternative 2B, this was, um, essentially looking at an offset, um, alignment for westbound US 2. Uh, this has some right-of-way impacts, um, but the, but the part of the purpose of this is to kind of help with the roadway banking. And so right now, it's kind of, as you're coming around the curve, it's banked at a, we call it super elevation. And so super elevation, it's at about six and a half percent today. So if you're able to kind of flatten that out a little bit more, you know, with what we've shown here, this would be about more of a 4%. Um, this has the potential to help with some of the runoff road type crashes that were But, so there's that aspect of it. Um, that also provides, by shifting that to the west, you provide more median storage for vehicles to stack in here. Um, as you can see in this bottom-left graphic here, uh, what that, what that looks like, that's essentially three, three WB 62 trucks that would be able to fit within that median approximately. Um, once again, the stable days access would need to be modified and closed, um, and also we, we would regrade in their similar situations. So, um, this improvement would actually have about a, almost a 40% crash reduction. Um, it provides about 1.6 million in, in crash benefit, but the cost is significantly more. It's about 3.3 million and, and most of that is tied with, uh, right-of-way and the fact that you'd have to be building actually new, new freeway or expressway type facility, that's a big cost. Um, so that, that's where the, the majority of the cost comes in with that improvement. So, 3A, um, this is essentially, um, what, what we do here is it's restricting the eastbound to northbound movement at this intersection from occurring. Um, but it's providing, it's still providing an opportunity for that movement to happen. Uh, that movement just happens further downstream. So those eastbound and northbound, uh, movements, uh, would be turning right into the acceleration lane, um, and then would merge over into a U-turn. So this is the R cut, the reduced conflict U-turn maneuver that, um, I had mentioned briefly a little bit earlier. Uh, and then those vehicles would make a U-turn and then continue on to the north, uh, along US 2. So, um, the eastbound and northbound movement, that's a relatively low-volume movement. During the peak periods, we're talking about five vehicles or less. Um, so it's a very low-volume movement. Um, and so that, that movement would still be able to occur, it would just be a, they would have to, some additional travel time in, in that, for that route to occur. Other things that, uh, this would do is, is, would simplify the left turn movement for vehicles that are from you, from US 2 to Business 2. The, uh, simplifies it by you have one less vehicle in conflict, uh, for those eastbound to northbound vehicles, they're not there at that location, so it, it simplifies that. Stable days access would once again get modified, um, or closed. And then, um, this alternative would essentially provide about a 35% crash reduction, cost about 1.5 million, or excuse me, would provide a safety benefit of 1.5 million and cost about 1.2. So you're actually getting more benefit than the actual cost of the improvement. So, alternative 3B, uh, this is essentially a modified R cut version. Um, what this once again does is it closes the US eastbound left turn lane so that the eastbound left turn lane can occur. Um, those eastbound vehicles would once again turn right and then come down and make a U-turn maneuver. Um, but what this alternative does is it utilizes the stable days access for that U-turn maneuver. So, um, essentially in this situation, um, because of the close spacing of the, the stable days access, we're not able to provide the acceleration lane. There's not enough room to get that merge over in that situation. So essentially, what happens is if you're on Business 2 and you want to go back to the north, you would turn directly into the left turn, the, the U-turn maneuver lane that would be constructed there, um, to provide that movement. Uh, this, uh, this wants, is similar to alternative 3A where it provides about a 35% crash reduction. It's about, you see about 1.5 million in crash savings, similar to the other option, um, but really it's, it's a, it's a low co, lower cost improvement. So it only costs about $700,000 to, so you're getting a lot of benefit to your, to your cost in, in this alternative. So these three alternatives, plus, you know, or four alternatives, I should say, 2A, 2B, 3A and 3B have, have really been the focus of, of our study, um, as we've kind of gone through the alternatives evaluation. We did look at a, a, a large range, I'm not going to go through all of these, we looked at putting a traffic signal in. We looked at if you put a roundabout in, if you close the median, what, what does that do? Well, okay, well, where does that traffic have to go to? Okay, it goes to 17. Well, what additional improvements do you have to do at 17? Or does that filter even further to the west on, at the Business 2 and County Road 17 intersection? Is there something different there you'd need to do as far as a roundabout or realignment? Each of these alternatives that we looked at, um, did provide some benefit and they, some of them provided a lot of safety benefit. Um, but when we worked with the steering committee, some of them also weren't very, uh, the, you know, the business owners and the steering committee weren't receptive to that. And so that's where we got away from just closing the median, median at US 2 and Business 2, um, in favor of kind of the alternatives 2A, 2B, 3A and 3B that I spent a little bit more time on. We did look at even higher level interchange, uh, different types of alignments, uh, R-cut intersections at County Road 17. Um, we did look at them, um, but I think from our perspective, I think where this is, where, through working with the steering committee, I think the alternatives where we ended up with, it make, make a lot of sense, both from a technical perspective and it works, uh, for the business community as well. So when we go through the evaluation process, you know, everything is about the purpose and need and this kind of all filters into the environmental documentation aspect of things. So, you know, the purpose and need is really about safety, capacity and heavy commercial compatibility. We know early on that, you know, there's, there's two of our alternatives that didn't meet the purpose and need, uh, for the project. That was the traffic signal alternative, as well as, uh, one of the other ones where we looked at, uh, realigning County Road 17 and Business 2, kind of combining them into one. Though, that one didn't provide any safety benefit, uh, to the situation, so those were actually removed. All the other ones are kind of moving forward, um, at least from a documentation perspective and evaluation perspective. So, we worked with the steering committee, developed a, a list of nine different criteria, um, that we value, and then helped prioritize those. So, safety being the number one priority, priority from, from everybody in the steering committee's perspective, heavy commercial compatibility, system linkage and, and so on. And so we, we go through a process and we, we weight those and we provide different multipliers and then, you know, there's, there's subcategories of each of these different criteria as well. And I won't go into all of those because it's a lot of information, but we score them, you know, does it, does it meet the criteria? Does it, is it meet it, but it's just acceptable? Is it, is it moderate, is kind of a neutral situation or does it, or does it hurt? Is it less, less desirable or poor? So we go through that evaluation process for each of the alternatives, um, to kind of compare them against one another. And, and so what we found, as I alluded to a little bit earlier, um, there were really three alternatives that, that were, from a evaluation criteria perspective, were above average. Um, that was alternative 2A and then alternatives 3A and 3B. 3A and 3B were the two various R cut options. 2A was, um, essentially leaving, um, the intersection as it is, but with the turn lane improvement and the acceleration lane. 2, 2B, um, fell into the average category, as well as alternatives 5 and 6A and 6D, so we didn't want to spend too much time on this, but alternative 2B, um, there's a lot of good discussion about 2B and I think, um, Darren could probably speak a little bit to the fact of, of the situation, but, um, when you widen, you know, 2B was the option where the westbound was realigned to increase, increase the space between the westbound and eastbound lanes, so you had more vehicles stacking in the middle. Um, I think there's, the jury's still out on whether that, that's a full safety improvement or not. Um, and I think, you know, when you look at similar situations in Crooks, then I think the DOT is having safety issues there. And so, from a technical perspective, I think there, there's some safety benefits to that alternative, but I think there's also some, some risk associated with that alternative. So, um, so from our perspective, the, really the three recommended improvements kind of moving forward, um, and Darren can speak a little bit, um, to, to the, to the next steps a little bit here, but the, really the three improvements that, from a technical perspective, that we would recommend to move forward into kind of further design development phase and evaluation would be alternative 2A, um, that we talked about here, I'm not going to go through all the stuff I already, already mentioned, but essentially that's the, you know, maintaining all the movements like they are today, but with kind of smoothing out the middle, adding the offset left and then the, the eastbound to, to southbound acceleration lane. Alternative 3A, which is the, the modified R cut, um, which would be, the R cut would happen essentially a quarter mile downstream, uh, and then 3B, which is utilizing the stable days access to provide that U-turn maneuver. So, those are the three, uh, options that we would recommend to move forward. Um, so as of now, kind of the next steps is, there's a draft final report that's in, in, in the works, uh, the steering committee's had the opportunity to review it. Um, and so we're just waiting on final comments, so that at some point, at the end of the month here, we'd be wrapping that up into a, a final report. With that, I'll kind of turn it over to Darren if he has any other questions. We did, at one of the public involvement meetings, share a video, which we can bring up here if, if desired to kind of illustrate what that R cut, uh, would look like, just as a feel perspective. Um, that was available, that was at the, the second public information meeting, but we can open it up to questions or have it planned at the same time or...
Sure. Darren, do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, as, as far as next steps, then, as I mentioned, we have that resurfacing project on Highway 2, um, that's going to be running on the westbound lanes from Fisher to, to East Grand Forks, about the, the Signal and Theft is the ending point there. With that project, we have about $11 million program. Uh, most of those funds are, are for resurfacing. Uh, we're either looking at, uh, putting the two minutes on top, or we'll be looking at, uh, unbonded concrete on top of the, the existing surface right now. Uh, but in essence, giving you a, a new driving surface along that stretch. Um, that leaves about, uh, about $2 million that's available for safety improvements. Um, all along that stretch, we'd like to, um, extend the left turn lanes. Right now, they're 500 feet. Uh, the new standard for expressways is 600 feet, so we'd like to be extending each of those an additional 100 feet. Uh, we're also looking at the, a number of right turn lanes that we can add along that stretch. Um, and we feel like it is feasible to, to do the improvement of Business 2 with the, the three alternatives that are recommended in the study, whether it's 2A, 3A or 3B, those are all physically feasible to do with that, with that project. And so at this point, um, we'd like to narrow the alternatives down to those three and, and then we need to, to work further on, um, doing the full environmental analysis on those three options and start getting into, um, some of the, the right-of-way discussions and talking stable days, um, try to work that out before we make a, a final decision on which alternative we're going to move forward with. Um, you know, the project would be built in 2021. I, I hope over the next year that we, we narrow that, those three down to the one. Uh, it, it may take two years to get that answered. Uh, we kind of committed to the steering committee that, uh, we're going to keep them informed, um, and probably when we get to that point where, where down to that, that final answer, we'll, we'll once again be with the steering committee and, and bring that to, to the council and the MPO as well. But at this point, you know, I think our goal is narrow it down to those three options and then report there.
Okay. Same as Mr. Grassel.
Do you have data on that R turn? Like, what is the crash rates on coming off of Business 2 onto US 2 to make that turn? Is that, to me, that looks like someone trying to come off to make that R turn to head back. That is dangerous to me already, I mean, but...
It, it is. I mean, we're always taught, you know, that U-turns are dangerous, we shouldn't be doing U-turns, um, and, you know, the, the philosophy's kind of come out over the last 10 years and so we started doing some of these R cuts across the state. Um, MINDOT recently did a study a few years back, where we had done, I think, 11 of them in the state, um, some in similar situations like this. They're generally on expressways, um, generally when you have, um, you know, a crash issue and that left turn movement is a lower volume. Um, and so, um, and what came back with that study was, you really knocked down your severe and your fatal crashes in that, in that situation because you're no longer having those, uh, those right angle crashes. It's more of the side swipe crash, so, um, you know, they did see a, a general reduction in crashes as well, uh, but the big significance was you were drastically reducing severe and fatal crashes with that, uh, with that design. Also, and I'll just point out again, you know, in, in this situation, very few vehicles are making that left out here. Um, you know, it's, you know, it's a 20 a day, it's, it's a small amount of less than 1%.
Darren?
Two questions. Um, did you study the effect of reducing the speed of Highway 2 through there and, um, street lighting, you know, in that, in that vicinity? What effect might that have? You know, there can be some con- You know, there can be some confusion when you're making the turn, you're looking for cars and then you got to reorient yourself to where am I going? Those two were the ones that I kind of wondered about.
In regard to the street lighting, I do think all three of these options are going to have some component of street lighting. And, um, a, a, as far as looking at reducing the speed, um, Matt kind of covered it nicely in the, in the steering committee earlier. You know, some of these improvements, you know, the offset left turn lane, you know, that's going to add more of an urban feel to that intersection. Additional street lighting, um, and then we may even look at, um, some type of warning device when there's a vehicle approaching Business two. That there'll be something, warning vehicles on Highway two that there's a vehicle approaching. Some of those things may allow that speed to reduce. We don't have the, the authority to just go out and change the speed. We have to do a speed study and it's based on what people are driving. And, um, what we've typically seen on Highway two is, you know, it would not be reduced in this situation. But if you change the environment, some of these alternatives will do that, you may see a small reduction. I, I don't think it'll be significant, but you will see maybe one, two miles per hour left.
So in areas like this that you've studied, it does not warrant reduced speed, like bringing a 55 mile speed limit out past there, not likely to happen?
We have to set it based on what people are driving. If we don't, what we end up with is a speed differential. We'll get some folks that drive what they're comfortable driving, which is 70 miles an hour in this situation. And we'll get some folks that drive what the speed limit is, which is 55 miles an hour. And we have this differentiation of 15 miles per hour. You want to have people kind of in that, that range, so you can, you can judge your gaps better. You, you have that expectation that everybody's going about the same speed. When you get that differential, you end up with more problems than less.
Thank you. Um, two questions. The first, with the two B option, we, you kind of talked about Kirkston kind of, or just outside of Kirkston, they did that on 75. And two, you mentioned that there were some issues with that. Is it, are people not able to estimate how much room is in there to stack or is there visibility issues or what's the issue?
We see this all across the district of when we have an intersection on the curb, we have challenges. And, and there is, you know, it is harder to judge your gap in that curb. It's just hard to estimate how fast that vehicle is actually going. In Kirkston, we see a lot of the, the near side getting hit. So with southbound, um, making a left into Kirkston, um, they're getting hit on the near side. To me, it looks like you have a perfect sight line and we're not quite sure why it's happening, but it is happening. You know, they may be, you know, it kind of gives you the illusion that the highway keeps going and they may just miss the stop sign. But, you know, it's, it's hard to predict. You also have, you know, the, the eastbound, northbound maneuver. You really have to crank your head back to, to see your gap. So I think we see some issues there as well. And so we'd be creating that situation, that two B is very similar. But I think your predominant movement is left in, right out at two B. And Kirkston, it's, um, it's probably left out and right in.
And I, I appreciate that. One of the questions I, or one of the things I'm wondering too is there's a lot more space there, it seems like than it was. And I'm wondering about that, would it be the, the, the one with the acceleration lane? All of a sudden, there's more room there. And when there's room, whether it's painted or if it's winter or whatever, I mean, sometimes more room gives more confusion. And like you said, as, as you're approaching that, all of a sudden it's where do I go? How do I move in there? So I, I don't know if that's going to be the issue. But I do like, I do like the acceleration lane idea. I just wonder if all of a sudden now we're opening it up and it's just kind of, people get a little bit, um, a little bit confused as to where to go. But the other question I have is on all of the options, it looks like Todd's, one of Todd's, um, access gets removed. Is that?
Does show a future one being added back in, right?
You know, that, we will be negotiating that, um, you know, with, with Todd. And that'll need to be a right away acquisition. We've, we've talked about it. And, and yeah, there would ideally, you know, if we could slide that to the tangent part of two B, the further way we can get it from the intersection is just, it takes away a little, one less conflict that we have in an already problematic intersection. Is it a must that that has to get slid down? No, but I think it would provide just added safety benefit. One less thing that you have to watch for when you're, when you're making that move. That's always part of our, our access management goals. And the same thing with the, the stable days is that, that access is just so close to that next left turn lane. That it leaves just some confusion and it's just one more thing that you have to watch out for at a dangerous intersection. The more we can simplify for the driver, the less mistakes we're going to see.
Would there be a possibility of moving that further east state of the day?
There is possibility, but it would be very expensive to further with the railroad. Yeah, we, we haven't fully vetted that and I think that's, that's pretty important over the next year here to really flush that out. Look at some options because, you know, you know, I, I'm concerned of, you know, what if that does develop into something more and we get a lot of activity there? That could be a growing problem that we see. And, and also, you know, we did close the median, that kind of does restrict some of the movements taken there. How do they get their left out and where do they make their U-turn? So we need to flush that out a little bit more and that will have an impact on which alternative we look at.
But all these things get more expensive if they're not included in probably that paving project, right? I mean, you're doing add-ons here and there, they get more expensive, so.
Yeah, and, and when you look at your cost analysis, that's, that's all based on a standalone. When we tie it with this pavement project, I, I see these costs being cut and halved. I see some big benefits there. You just have that much more quantity of materials going in there and less mold, less traffic. All those, all those little things kind of add up to some big savings.
I got a request. Put up a do not litter sign. So we don't have to pick up all the beer bottles and McDonald's wrappers and all the other garbage every morning.
We haven't adopted the highway progress.
Well, that's when they finished, they finished Ray McMuffin by there.
Yeah, like I didn't need all those, they make muffins. What a waste of money.
Wayne or Trent, do you guys have anything to add at all? I want to make sure you have, Jen, I know you guys met, so I just wanted to make sure.
We've discussed after all these meetings with, with these two gentlemen, we've had a lot of conversations, sometimes heated conversations. And then when it first started, there was maybe a lot of common sense being applied to it. We've been a lot of times business owners out there and we see what's going on out there. We still ask some questions in regards to the number of accidents that are being filed and the type of accidents that are being filed. In my personal opinion, what I do as accidents out there are a lot of single vehicle accidents that are runoff accidents. The few rear ends, um, they're also associated with speed in relationship, whether it's happening at two in Business two or if it's happening for all of the, help out the state shop on, on Highway two. There's a lot of runoff accidents that are there that are single vehicle accidents that goes back to what Steve said. Not with one of my initial things, I constantly get stressed with speed and like, I, I thought that would be one of the least expensive things on taking drivers. And that's their, um, of the, the recommendations that they have there, I may have gone very uncomfortable with the R cut. Talking to the businesses that are on Business two that weren't at the meetings, talking to a lot of the area farmers that are affected by this intersection. Actually, the, the route that they like was the two B with the larger median in the middle for stacking, particularly for our six to eight weeks during the harvest. That provides a safer environment in between the highways. What we tend to find is people are having a hard time misjudging and it's just the yield sign between the two, the median. They're running through there at very, very high rate of speed and that's where these accidents tend to, that appear to happen. If they had to give a concession, we felt that was two A would be the one that we would like to see. That does really change the center median or stacking capabilities, but with the, um, acceleration lane, I think that does have some safety features for that.
I think one of the things, I know I talked to Wayne, we talked about this other day, was out on Highway 21 and 75 where they have the lighting and they have the flashing signs, which I know you, you spoke about. And I think that's one thing that will help a lot. Just a couple of us indicated that, I think something that is really needed out there, so. I think it's great that you guys were able to meet and you guys were able to sit down and talk and go through it all. I know this is a long process and I, I hope that we can keep the doors open and keep talking and go through the process. Does anybody else have any questions? So I know you're talking one, two years, but timeline to come back and go through things? Are you, are you talking months or are you talking going out a year or maybe?
I would anticipate, um, probably a year from now, we'll have enough information that we can have some worthwhile conversations about narrowing this, those three down to one.
Okay. Any else have anything?
I guess one last thing is if, if we do this right and we can end the debate over, close it, close it. You know, every five years, close it. We don't want to hear that again because it's an important way for people to get into our community. And it's very certainly important to the businesses along there. So thank you for coming up with alternatives to keep it open and make it safer. We like that very much. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Move on to number two, update on transit development plan. Terry?
Just kind of a, uh, we're in our last, kind of our last stages of the, the transit plan. And so I kind of wanted to bring it back to you guys and, and do the overview. So that, I don't know where we've been and why we're going in some of the directions that we're going. So we're at the fir-, the first part of it. We did some input and, and some existing conditions. Talked to people about the issues, looked at the issues from a, a technical perspective as well. Came up with a prioritization system, looking at that, seeing how, how, what are our top priorities? Is this system working effectively? Are we reaching out to the people? Are we getting information out to people in, in a responsible way? Are we getting it out to them so that they know about it? Also the, that performance of the system itself as well as the operations. We heard the, the, the needs of the system. We want, we hear that frequency of service. I'm wanting, I'm wanting to hear, they're wanting to see that bus come every 30 minutes at the minimum, if not more often. That evening service, Grand Forks is looking more, more hours, more frequency. East Grand Forks, they like, they would like some evening service. As well as expanding into improving some of those coverage areas. One of the first things we did, we came up with new, changing up of the routes. That's, we, I brought forward these route changes to the council as well as several committees and the public. They probably changed a little bit since I've brought them forward just because of public input that we got from, from everybody. We've, there's a added route out to, to the university off of Route one, uh, out of the Route one. Kind of some of this re, re, revamping of where, what way it goes out in the industrial park area as well as the, I'm sorry, out in the Alaris area. As well as how it goes through to, to Walmart. There's also for East Grand Forks, we've kind of merged a couple of routes with Grand Forks. Originally, we, we did suggest the Route three merging into Route three for Grand Forks. Now we're also doing a, a Route five merging into Grand Forks. As well as an individual, continuing on this individual in, in city route. So that the people can connect up to, to the regular routes. As I said, suggesting this, this East Grand Forks night route to get through. So there's that main downtown service, people have been asking about going through, connecting up to Northland College. So there's, they're connecting up to routes and as well as home. Biggest, biggest reason why we're suggesting a lot of these routes is they're very expandable. You can throw a second bus onto, to each of this, these routes and now you're at 30 minute headways. Once you can afford that second bus. That's where we're running into a lot of it. We're going to be presenting a lot of cost constrained plans just because we're looking at everybody's budget. We understand that you have a budget and that's what we need to plan for. The Grand Forks side is, well, the day service is pretty much staying at that 60 minute headway. We, there is enough budget to do a 30 minute headway on one of the routes. One of the suggested routes would be the Route four through Grand Forks. The new thing would be having that headway or having that extra bus going through East Grand Forks. Currently, Grand Forks can only do one bus. That would be the, the, that's why there's this 75 to 90 minute headway for all the, the Route ones and Route sixes. Just because that's one bus going, operating for all of those routes. The reason why the Route three is a 60 minute is because it's going from Northland to All True and back again. One of the things that we're really, we'd like to see, a lot of people would like to see is this, this cost plus scenario level. You get a couple of extra routes that have higher peak service as well as getting a, a second bus in Grand Forks to have 60 minutes all across the board. The biggest, uh, the biggest deterrent factor is finding that, that extra funding for that night service, um, in Grand, on the Grand Forks side. That's about $300,000. East Grand Forks, uh, with the help of Mindot, you guys have managed to find that funding for that, that service, that night service as well as the, the other routes that we've been talking about. I know Nancy has some, some plans for finding funding once Mindot has said we're not doing it a hundred percent. We did hear the, the response, a lot of people wanted that, that Sunday service. They still want that Sunday service. Unfortunately, the budget isn't allowing for that right now. But we did propose a route for Sunday service as well and, as well as having that cost proposal out there so that people can kind of understand how much that's going to cost and how much money we need to find in order to operate that. The other side was also industrial park for Grand Forks. They, it's, it's, uh, getting to jobs and, and that kind of thing. And we wanted to be able to put a cost on that. So if the businesses wish to do some sort of public, private partnership and things like that, we can, we have a place of understanding for the cost of that service. Goals and performance measures and targets is, is the key to our transportation bills these days. And just so that we're performing and we're getting the biggest thing. days and just so that we're performing and we're getting the biggest thing for our bucks. A lot of these measures are things we're already measuring for transit these days anyway because transit is a highly performance-based service. We're making sure that those performance measures are being related back to the goals and that we're supporting the goals that we have put in place. Another big change is this transit asset management. It supports kind of that decision-making process. You're looking at the inventory for the whole service. You're looking at, that means not just the buses, it means the buildings, the software for computers, it's the, all of it basically. Anything that's replaceable basically is what's looked at. And you're evaluating the condition, putting a condition on it. We did that for the system. East Grand Forks has mostly vehicles in their ownership as well as some shelters. Grand Forks has a lot more of the other, of the other side of the system, but we did do that just so that we are able to let the state know this is what we're seeing for our condition and hopefully they will be reporting to the feds that we won't be responsible for that. But we also looked at kind of that budget of how much people, how much is being budgeted to maintain a lot of these capital investments. So we have this large backlog because only about $200,000 is being invested towards that right now. We've based a lot of our information budgeting just on that, just because we understand the budget is what it is. But we do provide an amount that can, that would be optimal. The final aspect, one of the final aspects of the plan is looking at that financial aspect, making sure we have enough for the routes, the actual operation of the system. We're riding, you know, that fine edge of course with transit and a lot of the surplus is being placed into replacing anything that's, that's we can from our backlog list. And that will eventually move a lot of those core numbers over into the marginal. One thing that's new for this plan is the coordinated human service transportation. Previously, it was in a separate plan. Now we're putting it into a, into this as part of this plan itself. We're basically looking at the riderships of the paratransit side as well as the senior riders side of this. Grand Forks has run in the past an age tripper. It used to be more of a fixed route kind of service, but now it's, the ridership is becoming less and more and more people are starting to just use the paratransit service anyway to get to their day training for the disabled. We've made suggestions of how to work more closely with the human services in order to be able to coordinate services as well as suggesting some how-to-ride seminars and things like that, especially for seniors. We think that riding the bus will probably be a little bit more freeing for them for the simple reason they don't have to call a day ahead and it's also less than their, the premium service of senior rider. Also suggesting talking to the agencies about agency rates and things of that nature. And then of course for the MPO side, we have to prioritize any projects. We normally just get them from Cities Area Transit, but we have in the past received the occasional request for vehicles from various human service agencies. So when that happens, we need, we need to prioritize those projects. That's about it for, I've got the summary that mostly we have our recommendations of that, of the new proposed routes and also highlighting that financial outlook, especially for Grand Forks. They're riding a finer line because they have the majority of the system, but we're also looking at East Grand Forks for their, their proposed new routes for their services. So after two years after MINDOT does. So there's any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Go on, another pre-approval on the service expansion. Rule of new service expansion funding from MINDOT, Nancy Ellis?
Hey, just a playoff of the transit development plan from a Minnesota standpoint. Minnesota has different regulations and different plans in the state of North Dakota. They right now have a transit investment plan and what they are considering their Olmsted Plan, which is a federal requirement to provide more service, more services for the disabled and seniors based on a law. So the state of Minnesota is moving in a direction that I'm following right now and it's being included in the TDP, which requires more service for cities over a certain size. They're setting the hours that they want from us, 16-hour days or 12-hour days, Monday through Saturday, which would then include night service, which we don't have, and Sunday service. Part of the Sunday service situation as to why we don't have it is because you have to provide both dialer ride service and fixed route and that gets to be pretty expensive. So at this point in time, for Cities Area Transit, to provide the Sunday service, that's really a non-option right now, but we do, we are looking at night service, which you see, and then an expanded or more frequent service. One of the reasons why we have low ridership is because we have two routes, one that travels in the north and goes into the Grand Forks Metro Station and then one that travels in the south and then comes back to the metro station. Travels exclusively in East Grand Forks. The majority of the East Grand Forks riders, they want to get into Grand Forks. And then in order for them to ride the bus for an half an hour to get to the transit center and then ride the bus for another half hour, 45 minutes for them, it is making the trip way too long. So based on that, we've looked at changing our routes, Route 3, Route 5, and then there would be a Route 8. Route 8 would continue the service that we have now in East Grand Forks, but it would shorten the hours. We would run it as a tripper service. Busy hours in the morning, busy hours in the evening would allow for a couple of connections. We're also looking at changing where our transfer center is. We're looking now more at the Grand Cities Mall because it's more of a centralized location. So you can get, if you look at our routes 3 and 5 that I included, they'll basically take you up and down the spine of East Grand Forks to the transfer center in the Grand City Mall, Grand Cities Mall. And then you would get on another route or it would take you directly out to the mall or out to All True. So it does provide more frequent service. Once we looked at those, we looked at additional costs. We would need an additional bus, the large buses. We would need to add about $115,000 a year for service for the daytime 3, 5, and then about $115 for the night service. Working with the state of Minnesota in order to meet their goals, what they need to meet, they have released funding, new service funding. They gave it to us, application within five days that needed to be filled out and submitted to the state, sent it in. They gave us funding up through 2020 for the Route 3 combined and the night service. They also gave us $460,000 for a new bus to help Cities Area Transit provide that more frequent service. So the first thing I'm here tonight is to accept those funds so we can kind of move forward on that TDP at 100 percent. So they will pay for those new route changes at 100 percent, which to me seems like a really good deal. Now, based in 2020, just to give you an idea of what we pay right now for fixed route service just for our routes in town, it's running at about $325,000. Majority of it is paid for by the state at an 80/20 and then we use some federal funds because we're allocated federal funds every year. The state of Minnesota in the past has required that we take 50 percent of the money and use it towards operating and save 50 percent of the money towards capital, which is understandable if we were a large system and we needed to purchase buses every year, but we do not. We purchase a bus about every seven years. And every seven years, because the state of Minnesota has always required kind of a transit asset management plan or a capital plan, 10-year plan, they've been funding all of our buses. So we have been using some of our transit funds to build sidewalks and/or do some bike improvements, those types of things. Based on the fact that the state is stating we're needing more frequent service and kind of Terry and I, and visiting with the feds, we've always kind of been a little confused as to why we couldn't spend more of our transit dollars on transit. You know, the actual operation's part of it. So once we get into that 2020 budget, I did get a verbal agreement from those that are running the program to allow us to use more of our federal dollars towards the operating portion of it, if not all of the operating, and then supplement it with the state so that even though our operating may go from 325 to 525, they would still cover the 80 percent of it. And our local share would go up about 35,000 is what we're figuring. So if we can get more revenue because we get more frequent service and we can figure something out at that point, you know, we can go from there. We can maybe reduce our day tripper if we're noticing that we're not getting as much service just within East Grand Forks and we're noticing more of our service running directly on those routes. And that's something that we can judge and will have to judge over the next two years. But right now, we have 100 percent funds to do it. And then when we get to that point, we have a lot of options to see how we can continue that service if in fact it's extremely popular and we're noticing a large increase in ridership. If we can't, and the city of Grand Forks obviously can't meet their needs, then we'll have to go back and, you know, maybe go back to just our regular tripper route and turn it into a day route like it is now because it's essentially the same route. And then we would just go back and reevaluate. But we have a couple of things on the table. I want you to know that, you know, we're still figuring out the finances and I'm still working with the state, but for right now, with the funds available, we have to either accept by resolution or they'll give it to someone else. So.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Demers?
Just a comment. I'm glad some of our people are starting to budget for 2020 already. I think it's important that we have a long-term budget perspective. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See none?
Me too.
I agree.
I think there's nothing else. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And the resolutions will go to next week's council. So, thank you.
Number four, request to station, for station 2 HVAC.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty self-explanatory. The unit has been giving us trouble for a couple of years. It's been impossible to get parts for. We put it in a capital improvement plan and then the unit has died completely. So water and light, thanks to them. They did a study on the energy so we can pick up a couple hundred dollars from them on the energy efficiency. So I guess the bids are so close. I guess my recommendation is that Anderson Heating and Cooling for 854992 and the money should be in the capital improvement plan, I believe for 8700.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd say move it on.
Number five, promotional process request. Chief, are you handling that, Mr.?
Yeah, I thought he was, said he was going to be back here, but apparently he's not. So I will do what I can here on this. I know Sergeant Demers, he's retiring and they're going to need to look at filling that particular position, the sergeant position. One of the things that he's looked at in his wallet, I guess for a little while is promotional process. They don't really have one formalized there at the police department. So he's really not asking for anything at this point other than if the council has any objections and working with the human resources staff and myself to begin to get their promotional process particularly for the sergeant position.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, sir? Okay. Thank you. And that one?
And the second one is our, the secretary dispatcher slash jailer position in the police department. She has given her a verbal notice that she is going to planning to retire in September of this year. So with that, to try to ensure that the process is as smooth as possible and have somebody in place then for the time that she will retire, he's asking that the council approve the, starting the hiring process for that particular position and moving it through civil service and all the required.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Seen none. Thank you. Number seven, request to purchase white wastewater pickup, Mr. Stordahl.
Nope.
Terry doesn't recognize the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have budgeted for, to replace our wastewater pickup and we got pricing off of the state contract page for, for a new pickup for the wastewater department. If council chooses to approve that, we would, we would actually trade in one of the parks pickups. It's a three-quarter ton Chevy that has quite a few miles on it and we have a flatbed that we could then give to parks. That's the same year truck, but probably about half the miles. So that's what I'm asking. Recommendation tonight is to purchase a new Dodge truck, three-quarter ton from Nelson's through the state contract pricing for $29,227 and declare surplus for trade unit 302, which is that parks pickup.
Any questions?
I'd say move it on.
Not double the price.
I was going to say, are we good with them or?
If you go to the state process, does it go right to them? And what if it changes or do you know that?
I don't know if it changes. What would happen, I guess. It's, that's our, that's our dealer, I guess, for the area on the state contract. So I'm guessing it would change to someone else, but.
I know, but there's, but there's some issues with that right now. Oh, over billing $700,000 or more.
They claim that's incorrect.
Anybody have any questions? Seen none. Thank you, sir. Request for sand, salt, storage building. This dated like 2008, '09?
So yeah, I don't know what round this is coming up, but we, excuse me, 2016, we, 2016, we, we, uh, bid the project, and the bids came in high, and, uh, council decided to reject all bids, and I had asked at that time if we could move forward with purchasing a building, and then looking into seeing what we could do for, for the, for the ground level stuff, for like the foundation walls and stuff, if we could do that on a separate, on like a separate contract. And so, WSN took a look. Uh, one of the issues that we have is the ground stability in that area. Right now, the way the ground sits, it's solid and firm, but once you start digging into it, if you have to put down footings, there's some instability there, and so, the cost to do that is substantial. So, WSN took a look at other options on how, on how we could go about that, and, uh, and they came up with a couple different options, and we kind of selected one of them for, for the walls, the foundation, and, um, and the bituminous. And tonight, I'm asking for, uh, for authorization for staff to, uh, prepare plans and specs, and advertise for bid, for the, for the building foundation portion, portion of it. We have, we have budgeted two hundred thousand. Estimated cost of the building is ninety, and estimated cost for, um, for the foundation type work is estimated a little bit over a hundred thousand, so, in that area, anyway.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any other place we could put it, besides?
We looked at a, a few different other areas, but there isn't any other area really at the public works facility that would be suitable. I guess the other areas that are there are, uh, are very poor. I mean, as far as drainage, as far as the ground conditions, and the wetness, frost boils, and stuff like that. We looked at other areas around town, but then it would require us to go to different sites throughout the night, so if we just have to run one load of sand, we might have to, wherever it might be. So, yeah, we did. We looked at a site on the north end, we looked at something kind of in the middle of the road, but then it requires a loader and a truck there. A lot of times, we only haul, we only call in one person to sand, so it's, you know, so, sometimes, there might be an overlap. Sometimes we have to call in two, an operator and a truck driver, if we have to continue to load, but it just didn't seem feasible for, you know, right now, we're kind of centrally located, and it kind of makes sense, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Seen none, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
See, I have just one other thing. Um, the loader that we, that council approved to trade in, with the purchase of a new loader, um, during spring cleanup, we had some problems with it, and, uh, so we brought it in, and it looks like it's going to be a pretty expensive repair. So I'm trying to work with, uh, RDO and see what we can do as far as, uh, you know, if we could split the cost or not. It's not looking too great right now. It's, the, uh, the cost of repairs could be in, to, around twenty-two thousand dollars, they're talking right now. And we had something similar happen with another loader last year, the year before, but, um, just wanted to bring it to your attention that, you know, we'll prob, we may have to do a repair on that, but, kind of looking at options on, on whether or not we can trade it in as-is, and what they give it for, give us for it, as-is, so, just wanted to bring that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, number nine, discussion on city clerk position, Mr.?
Mr. President, um, back in 2002, when, when the, um, the city positions were being looked at and be pointed, and, and that, one of the things that, um, was done at that particular time is, uh, Ms. Nelson was promoted to the executive assistant position, um, with the intention that she would, um, go to get the Minnesota, Certified Minnesota Municipal Clerk Certification, which is generally a three-year process. A city clerk position was created at that time, and was pointed, and then that, um, so, Ms. Nelson has gone forward, and she actually received her certification back in March of 2016. However, she, um, tends to not like to toot her own horn and push things forward and bring those kind of things up, so it was brought to my attention that, uh, she was told that, and actually not by her, that she was told that when she got that, she would be moved into that new position. So, did some checking on that, yeah, that was definitely the case, so with that, I'm requesting approval to start the process, which would, uh, with the requirement going through the civil service process, and, and if there's any questions, or?
Anybody have anything?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to, uh, just let you in on a little bit of background here. I, I have had a lot of experience with a lot of boards and so forth. Uh, never, in all my experiences, found anybody who's capable of this making. And, uh, I hope that the city has a good fortune that she doesn't retire at sixty-five. I hope she's seventy. If you want to see her, here is where it is your bed, okay? Now, she has a very unique intuition, and she anticipates, there's information that council members and the attorney and so forth, and the department head should, um, be aware of, and she's way ahead of the ballgame, and, uh, is a talent, and, uh, we don't want to lose her talent, uh, too soon. And, and I'll tell you one thing, she is the image of the city answering the telephone. People love to talk to her, because she, she does what she says she's going to do.
Maybe she had intuition that she knew you were coming, so she was gone.
And one thing that she does do, which is important, she always smiles. When people are smiling, things get better.
Mark.
Uh, thank you. I think, uh, Henry said no, she, she's as red as a bee right now. My only question is, the city clerk position is, I think, I think Megan deserves this position, she's worked hard for it. My only concern is, is the city clerk position has a lot of things that are called out specifically in the charter, as clerk treasurer, that we haven't cleaned up yet, that we should, because many of those things would be jobs that Ms. Nelson would do, but some of those are roles that our city administrators should do, um, and I just want to make sure that by doing this, I mean, I think we've had the clerk position before, and we've managed, I don't want to put the brakes on moving forward with this promotion, but we just need to clarify some, some language in the, in the charter that designates roles and responsibilities, because I don't think budget enforcement is, should be Megan's job, um, and, and, and things like that. So, uh, like I said, I won't oppose a promotion to this role, I just still think we need to clean up some of the, the language in the charter that calls out clerk treasurer type things, so, thank you.
Thanks, I will look at that.
You know, I just want to go on record and say, I, I do not plan to obstruct the promotion of Megan to the position of city clerk. My main concern really was that by going to that position, she would no longer be available, kind of in the partnership that has, has started out, um, but she assured me that she'd still take care of all of the stuff that she's been doing. I mean, I agree with what Mr. Tweeton said, as for, um, and I've told her this, I can't remember, we had someone in there, we were all meeting together. Um, she brings a real customer service mentality to what we do here. Um, sometimes, I think, when you deal with a city or any other unit of government, you might feel a little cold, or like, you know, this is the only way, and, and have a nice day, but I, I feel Megan brings a, a really strong customer service, where if you did call with a concern, she'll move it along quickly to where it actually can get resolved, and people know that she will do that. Um, so I, I feel that's a, a good, good, um, task for her, and I'm glad to think that that would still continue on, even with the promotion.
I'd like to make one more comment. We, uh, the city council, mayor and city council have been operating, uh, short on money for a number of years, and it's been difficult. And frankly, uh, I hope that the legislature takes and starts holding hands in some way and try to solve some of the problems of communities like us, but, uh, one of the things we, we're very fortunate, is we have good staffing through the water and light department, we've got good staffing through the, we've got excellent department heads. The department heads have been greatly involved in the action of the cities, and we're working as a team, and if we can continue to do that, we're, we're, uh, going to be, continue to be one of the fastest-growing communities in northwestern Minnesota, when you analyze it, who else is really getting any growth, us, more, uh, the benching a little bit, and so forth, so, uh, people know that something's happening, and we've, we've had, uh, plus this extra management, I think.
Anybody else have anything for David? Not, go on, and entertain a motion to adjourn, or?
One last item.
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. One last item. Um, I have two sons, Tom and John. My older son, Tom, is twenty-three, and has been diagnosed with cancer. He started chemo last Monday, and it will be a course of six to eight months of, of chemo every two weeks. And, um, I have a pact with him, as we do with my other son, John, that when his hair goes, so does mine. I didn't want to startle anybody, and so if you see me in here one day with a, a shiny head, it's in solidarity for my son, Tom, that's, that's all. Cool? Thanks.
Anybody else have anything? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Vote. Vote by Pachivinsky.
Second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carried, meaning is adjourned.